Hello, I'm Pastor Dave and welcome to our fifth session of our look at Acts of the Apostles. Now at this point, we're in the second half of Acts, and we're tonight, or today, we're looking at Acts 15 through 17. Now typically 15 ends Paul's first missionary journey, but at this point, he's in the council in Rome, or a council in Jerusalem. He's not really out engaging the faithful. And what we see here in this council is we're seeing some bickering. And that should come as no surprise to anyone who spent enough time in the church. And one of the great challenges is how do you prevent a bickering faith from smothering, or a bickering of the church smothering faith? Now at this point, Paul and Barnabas are back from Antioch. And really, in Antioch, Jew and Gentile were living as brothered. But some of the Jews were struggling with their past identity as Jews and the effects the law has on the church now. And part of this was a question of whether Gentiles needed to become Jewish first. Because there was no objection to the idea of preaching to Gentiles. This goes back all the way to Genesis 12 verse 3. That states a covenant would be a blessing on all the earth. But some Jews didn't like that Gentiles could keep their own identity after conversion instead of becoming Jews. So would this be a new sect of Judaism, or something different? And some are adamant, as you can see in chapter 15 verse 1 about circumcision. And this is something the Pharisee faction of the early church would demand, that this is according to the law. And this is a group that in Galatians chapter 2 verse 4, Paul would call the Pharisee or circumcision faction, and calling them false brothers. So it shouldn't come beyond the doubt that Paul and Barnabas are against this faction. But in fairness to the Jewish converts, this is a natural question. Because the first Christians were Jews. Jesus was raised as a Jew. And Jews had always required Gentiles who converted to become circumcised and adhere to the rituals of the Torah. So could Jewish Christians be in fellowship with Gentile Christians? Or was this, or would that lead to them even being second, separate churches? And this is something, basically the gospel is at stake here. But as we look, especially in verses 6 through 12, we see how the church should debate the issue. Peter reports, James interprets. And Peter brings up his experience with Cornelius. And at this point, this is 10 years past from that instance. And saying, you know, "The Holy Spirit was at work with the Gentiles, there's proof of it." And I love this statement, "What man has ever found happiness through the law?" And it is a reminder, the Holy Spirit was sent to the Gentiles. God has already made the declaration loud and clear that the boundary is not about circumcision, but of faith. And this defense from Peter aligns with Galatians 1 verses 8 and 9. But this goes down to a deeper question of whether or not anyone can ever earn favor with God, or they must admit their own helplessness. And into this, Paul and Barnabas speak of their own experience about how God has been at work in their mission to the Gentiles. But ultimately, there's a paradox in Christianity where basically our victory is found in our surrender to God. Now James, as the church leader, starts speaking in 13. And he's not an official leader, but he's the moral leader because of his being the brother of Jesus. And there's kind of an especial, and he holds to this special resurrection appearance from Jesus. And he was also known to be a constant follower of the law, in constant prayer. And it's James who really wanted to remove any hindrance from the Gentiles becoming Christian. But one of the things about revelation is that it needs to be confirmed by experience and tested by Scripture. Any great idea needs to be backed by that experience that this is, this has worked before, and also it aligns with what is in Scripture. So not every law was removed. James kept the prohibition against idols, kept the prohibition against fornication, and also refrained from meat that was strangled or consuming blood. And those echoes actually more the Jewish tradition that blood belongs to God, not to man. And this really did finally allow for intercourse and interconnection between the Jews and Gentiles, because the last barriers now are destroyed, that as long as they keep these basic rules, everyone is fine. And also the idea that the converts would be welcomed into a reconstituted Jerusalem. Now Luke's view of the Torah, his view was always that God's people must follow God's law. Kind of demonstrating our fidelity to God in our earthly actions. And from this, we can draw, as Bishop Willam pointed out, that we shouldn't abandon our standard of doctrine and morality. But in this, we have Simeon. And in this, James does affirm the defense of the circumcision-free gospel. "Salvation is by grace alone, through faith alone, in Christ alone." This is where this is based. "No action itself is what saves it." We are all saved by the grace of God through faith alone, by Christ, in Christ alone. And overall, the council agrees with James. And what's good here is that once the church came to the decision and the agreement, they acted efficiently, they acted courteously, and they just moved on. And with this, they sent a letter with Silas and Judas to Antioch, along with Paul and Barnabas about what had happened. And it's important to have four people there, because if Paul and Barnabas came back alone with a letter, their opponents in the city would have doubted the authenticity. But Judas and Silas were kind of the official emissaries that said, "No, this is true." And they also added warmth that you can't get in a letter. It's one of those things we even see with text messages and emails. You can't always take the right tone with them. You can read a wrong tone into something that it doesn't really belong with. And for this, we can look at Silas a little bit. He does come up in, in four different letters, three by Paul, one by Peter. And it's possibly the Sylvanias. He's associated both Peter and Paul. But overall, the message Judas and Silas deliver is that circumcision is no longer a requirement. But also that while delegates could also not, would not only deliver that message, but give the oral commentary, "This is how this came about," to give the clarification, but also emphasize the Spirit directed the unanimous decision not to place burdens on the Gentiles. Basically removing that barrier of them coming into full connection in the church. But at the end of Acts 15, we get the start of the second missionary journey, starting in verse 36. And I mentioned this briefly last week, that this is where we're also seeing a bit of conflict. Because in their previous journey, John Mark left. We don't know why he left, but he returned to Jerusalem. And here, as Paul and Barnabas are set to go out on their second journey, Barnabas wants to bring John Mark with him. Paul says no. And this is something that is important for us, because, and some of us have lived this in recent years. But what happens when a community of faith disagrees? How best do you handle this? When we look at this, Paul and Barnabas had differences of opinion, and we can't say that one is more wrong or more right than the other. Because Paul was justified in what he thought, so was Barnabas. So they lovingly did separate from one another. But when we look at what ultimately happened, Barnabas did take John Mark, and John Mark redeemed himself. And actually, Paul would be reconciled with him and would call him a beloved coworker in Colossians 4, 2 Timothy 4, and then Philemon verse 24. And it probably worked out for the best, because Barnabas was the encourager, and he's the one who took John Mark to Cyprus, and Paul takes Silas with him. But also, Paul chooses to take Timothy with him, and that becomes an important step for us in the second missionary journey. Now in this journey, Paul goes into Asia Minor, into Europe. And this gives Luke the opportunity to better organize Paul's narrative together. And this journey even takes the church further in, further in its journey as a church to the Gentiles, and really reinforces the expansion of the church. Now at this point, in the beginning of 16, this is the first time in about five years that Paul had been in Derby and Lestira. We heard of Lestira last week. And along with him, and he has Silas, but also Timothy. Now Timothy was a young man. He was the son of a Greek father and a Jewish mother and grandmother. And it was likely that Timothy, Timothy's mother and grandmothers, who were Jewish, had become Christian in one of Paul's previous mission journeys. Now what's interesting, according to rabidic law, Timothy was considered Jewish because he had a Jewish mother. But he had never been circumcised. So now, in 15, we had this circumcision debate, and now we're here with Timothy. And as we look at this, the Gentiles were free from the circumcision requirement. But it's kind of like Paul never saw that the Jewish converts had the excuse. And it could be also a more practical concern, because last time Paul was in these areas, the Jews really harped against him for what he was teaching and preaching. So what would have happened if he would have had a half-Greek, half-Jew who had never been circumcised? Now with Titus, who was fully Gentile, this wasn't an issue. We see that in Galatians 2 verses 3 and 5. But it could be that Paul was trying to, looking at Timothy like, "You are Jewish, you should have done this." Or "You're required to have this, even though the Gentiles are not." And it was as a way of, also almost making him the bridge between the Gentile and Jewish worlds. That he was Jewish ethnically because of his mother, he had been circumcised, but he has that foot in the Greek world as well. And we can struggle with this, but as we look at it, the fact that Paul accepts Timothy to go along with this mission even before he was circumcised also shows a breakdown on Paul's thinking too, because typically Jews looked down on mixed marriages between Jews and Gentiles. But yet Timothy was fully accepted. And we see, and you'll see this in your handout, of Tim, where Timothy comes up in the Bible. I mean, we have the two letters of Timothy, 1st Timothy, 2nd Timothy. But he is brought up in 1 Corinthians, 1 Thessalonians, Philippians, Colossians, Philemon. And yeah. But at this point, we get them going into Asia, and there's a little bit of, we're seeing that they went through Phargia and Galatia, and they were forbidden to speak a word in Asia. In Asia, this isn't the continent of Asia that we know. This would like to be the Roman province of Asia, which would be Turkey. It could just be a reference to the Aegean coastline in modern-day Turkey. But regardless, they couldn't, Paul couldn't preach. And the question is, why did the Holy Spirit prevent Paul from preaching? There are questions of if it was because of ill health, which begs the question, in verse 10, we see a shift in the language from third person to first person, because we see Luke write "we." Luke was a physician. Is this when he encountered Paul, because he was treating Paul's illness? Could also be that maybe Paul lacked an inner peace. And I can say it as a pastor, and I'm sure if we were all honest pastors would agree, that there's just sometimes you just don't have it in you to preach, even if we push through it. But basically in this area, they couldn't preach, and they get the vision to go to Macedonia. And there was a vision of a man saying, "Come to Macedonia and help us." And there's some interesting traditions with this. Some say the man in the vision was Alexander the Great, which Alexander the Great had persecuted the Jews. If you get in a study Bible with the Apocrypha in it, you can see that narrative in the four books of the Maccabees. But going to Macedonia is a big step, because it's also a step into Europe. For so far, it'd been in the eastern Mediterranean, what we would now call the Holy Land, modern-day Turkey, Cyprus. Macedonia means Europe. This is the home of Alexander the Great. And there's really an interesting trinitarian nature to this calling that Tony Merda puts forth. Where really in verses 6 and 7, we're getting the idea that the Holy Spirit prevented the preaching. The Spirit of Jesus prevented them from going to a different town, Bithynia. But then God calls them to go to Macedonia. So this is an interesting trinitarian nature here to all of this. But this is also one of those reminders about following God's will, because God sometimes closes doors to us, but God also opens doors to us. Now at this point, they have to get there. And really, it is a short voyage from Thrace to Neapolis, which is the port for the Macedonia city of Philippi. Probably took about two days by boat, and it's a 10-mile foot journey from Neapolis to Philippi. Now this area, this is a wealthy area. This is an area known for its gold mines. It's known for springs in the area of Philippi itself. But also, this was a Roman colony. It was kind of like a little Rome planted in foreign soil. It was a leading city of the area. Many Roman veterans were there. And what's interesting is there's no synagogue in Philippi. So Paul's normal, go to the synagogue and preach first, he couldn't do. But Jewish tradition was that there's no synagogue, you go to the river, the flowing water, and that's where he meets Lydia. Who becomes his first convert here in Macedonia. And Lydia was a purple merchant. The purple market was really centered on Thyatira. And this was not a Jewish job, because to die to make purple was extracted drop by drop from a certain type of shellfish, which are not a clean animal. But because of the value of purple, Lydia was a wealthy woman and was a worshipper of God. Because remember, the Jewish faith was attractive to Gentile women, especially because of the moral stances and the sexual ethics. And God paved, that was God paving the way for this conversion, and she was won over to Christ and offered Paul some hospitality. And this is really some interesting work when we look at this. Because these are barriers getting broken down. Paul was talking to a woman. At that time, that was not something one would do. And her husband, who she helped convert, would have been a man of much higher social standing than Paul, unless he wasn't a citizen, but being wealthy was placed him higher than Paul, who was a tent maker. But in this, Paul and Silas were still willing to talk to a woman, which was not done in this world. And also accepted her hospitality, which again, they're Jews going into a Gentile home. That's something else that wouldn't happen. Same with a male accepting female hospitality. We're seeing a breakdown, not so much the breakdown of social structures, but the importance of God's mission over the things we create to order things on earth. And really, Lydia's home would almost become like the missionary home in Philippi as people came through. And at this point, we have to look at the idea of wealth. Because we can look throughout Scripture about how it's harder for a rich man to enter the kingdom of heaven. Or it's easier for the camel to pass through an eye of a needle than for a rich man to enter heaven. That is not to say that there's no hope, because we do have instances of rich individuals doing good work. Think of Zacchaeus. Think of the good Samaritan parable, or even Cornelius. There, and throughout history, there's always been wealthy individuals who are generous with their money to further the work of the church. It's not a prohibition. But here, first converting Europe, in what would be Europe proper, was a woman, Lydia, a rich woman. Now from verses 16 through 24, we get another story. And this is about the slave girl, which this is the opposite end of the socio-economic strata. She's a, it's a slave girl, young woman, who is in bondage to her owners. And really, I love that Tony Merda put it this way, she's under a double bondage. She's a slave, but also she is possessed by a demon. Now when we get to some of these things, we don't know exactly what it was. I'm not going to deny that it could very well be a demon. But also, there's questions, was this mental illness? Was this schizophrenia? Was it some combination of various things, including possession? But also, what's interesting is the ancient people had a fascination with the people who were mad, so to speak, that had some type of mental illness, thinking that they had the wits of the gods and were practically a ventriloquist dummy of the gods. So the gods are speaking through them. That's why they were crazy. For us, we would say it's more demonic possession. And there is some of this in Greek mythology as well, with the python. That a python guarded the temple of Apollo, or of Apollo, and often pythons were synonymous with demonic possession. So in some versions of this, we see that she has a spirit of python. But either way, she was predicting the future and making her owners money. But this demon-possessed girl was kind of trying to tie Paul's ministry into the occult. And Paul wasn't having it. And then so he proclaimed that in the name of Jesus Christ, to drive the demon out. Now what's amazing is now she is healed. She is free from that bondage, but her owners were more mad because they lost the economic opportunity that came from her. And probably others around her, because she was likely known to be like a fortune teller, or a soothsayer, or a voice of the gods, or whatever. That people would come just to hear what she was going to say, that likely had a trickle-down effect in the local economy. And that, the healing kind of upset that apple cart. And the owners were mad they lost the money. So much, so they kind of whipped up the crowd against them, kind of a bit of Roman pride of how could they silence the voice of the gods? But also just general anti-Semite, of what, look at what these Jews did have done. And basically claiming the missionaries did unlawful acts, so they would be imprisoned. And there's an interesting turn in here that Bishop Willam points out, of like, the liberators are now imprisoned. And at this point, we get the third instance here, where we already had the high level of society, slaves, and now we kind of got the middle with the jailer. He's more like the middle-class civil servant type. And again, under Roman law, if prisoners escape, the guards or jailers will pay the punishment for the, that the prisoners were under. So when this earthquake hit, the foundations of the prison shook. Doors were open, and when the jailer saw that, he was ready to kill himself, falling with his sword. Because basically, he knew he was a dead man. Now in the midst of this, Paul and Silas, this whole time, were singing. They were having a wonderful time in prison, because imprisonment in earthly terms is different than freedom under God. They were, regardless of what happened, that they were doing God's work, they were pleased. And what's interesting is Paul pays a way to salvation for this jailer. He calls out, "Do not harm yourself, for we are all here." Basically saying, "Don't kill yourself. We didn't run." And when the jailer asks, "How can I be saved?", he immediately goes into telling him about Jesus and converting him and the household to Christ. Now part of this too, was the way may have already been paid, because the jailer likely knew what Paul and Silas were accused of, heard about the healing of this demon-possessed slave girl, and knew that they could do something. But we also see the immediate fruit of their conversion by how he acted once he came to Christ. And offering aid, and offering aid to those he had imprisoned. Washed their wounds, gave them food, acting as they were to be treated. Now 35 to 40 ends chapter 16, and ultimately, we kind of see the cowardice of the magistrates, where they don't know what to do. Especially if they would have heard that a Roman citizen was beaten and imprisoned. They likely wanted him gone, but even then, if they looked around and went, they drove out a demon. Like some deity is on their side. We just want them gone before they cause trouble. But as we look at this, they didn't immediately run out of the city. First, they went to visit Lydia, and others they had converted to encourage them before departing. And this is a sign that Christianity is not a threat to the Roman order. And a reminder that they're going to obey the civil authorities and not cause further riots. So Christianity is safe. But at this point, they're told to get out of town, and they, they do, and they go down the road to Thessalonica. Now Thessalonica was an important city. It was on the great Roman road from the Adriatic to the Middle East called the Ignatian Way. And this was a place where if the church could take root here, it was guaranteed to spread. So once Paul gets there, there's a Jewish community. He does what he always does. He goes and preaches in the synagogues. He preaches there for three weeks. He expounds on the Scripture, and and he wants Jesus to open the eyes to the Thessalonics, so they could see what happens. And he started being successful with some of the Jews and some of the God-fearing Gentiles, at which point some became jealous and trumped up charges against the church. And I love that basically, they took the low, the low road instead of the high road on this. And had Paul and Silas and Jason and others charged with insurrection and rebellion. And it mainly boils down to three charges. That Paul and Silas were troublemakers. Jason was condemned for harboring the troublemakers. And that Paul and Silas and their followers were acting contrary to Caesar's decrees, which means they were rebels and insurrectionists. At which point, the city officials were overly cautious. They ordered Jason to pay bond to say, "You basically give us some money and you lose it if they cause any more trouble." Because sometimes they, they recognized envy in people. And Paul, Silas, and Timothy were forced to leave Herbaria that night. And this is confirmed when we look at 1 Timothy, and also Timothy's return in 1 Thessalonians. So the good of Herbaria, which is 60 miles away, it's a three-night journey to the city. And he had different success here than he did in Thessalonians. And he had different success here than he did in Thessalonica, because in this city, there were Jews and God-fears who knew Scripture. They studied it heavily, they studied it with an attitude of humility. They had the spirit of discernment. And he starts preaching, and he sent people searching into Scripture. And there were still some of the opposition, there was still some envy. But Paul wasn't going to back down, he was courageous for his faith. And we're seeing that same model continue. He went to the synagogues, some of the Jews accepted the gospel, some rejected. Now, as a result, we see that there's some conversion, but we also see conflict stirred up, especially when word came from Thessalonica and Jews came from Thessalonica and saw that he was there. And what's interesting is they're targeting Paul, not Silas, not Timothy, because they got to stay in the city. They went after Paul, and he had to flee again. Noticing the pattern and how this is going to move a bit quicker than the first sessions. At this point, he goes to Athens. And I would say for us at New Life, this is probably our... The most relatable thing for us, because Athens at this point wasn't the great city of earlier in antiquity. But it was still a learned city, it was a great university city. It attracted scholars from throughout the ancient world. It was also a city full of idols. So much so, it was said, "It was easier to find a god in Athens than a man." Now, for Paul, he would be struck by the idolatry, but that's mainly because he was seeing things differently than the world around him. So Paul does what he does. He goes to the synagogues and preaches, and then he also preaches in the marketplaces. But not exactly clear whether that was before or after he got kicked out of the synagogues, which often happened as well with Paul. But there was a kind of a curiosity when he preached in the marketplaces, because Athenians liked new things, because, oh, new God, add him to the pantheon of gods. But also, it allowed for the dialogue between the people and Christianity, and showing that it's a public faith, not just a private faith. It allowed for dialogue with skeptics, with the philosophers of Athens, and allow them to come up with a comprehensive worldview. But in this, he also encountered two different schools of thought for philosophers. One was the Epicureans. The Epicureans believed everything happened by chance. They believed that death was the end of the soul, there was no eternal life, the soul wasn't eternal. They believed that there were gods, but they were distant and didn't care for the world. And they believed that pleasure was the chief aim of men. Lot of that sounds familiar, doesn't it? You still have it. Basically, these people were materialists who saw everything as being by chance and saw enjoyment above all else. Still exists today. Now, the other group were the Stoics, and these are better known in our world today. But to them, everything was a god, there's a little bit of God in everything, of a god. For them, everything was fated, as everything was the will of God. Therefore, they didn't need to care about what was going to happen, because it was beyond their control. They also believed that every so many years, the world would disintegrate and start all over again. Basically, these were pantheists who were calm about everything. They kind of had a fatalist attitude and accepted the endurance of whatever was going to come through them, because it didn't matter, because it was beyond your control. These were the main groups to which Paul was opposed in Athens. And ultimately, he was taken to Mars Hill, to the Areopagus, which was kind of the high court of Athens. They only dealt in the serious cases like homicide or public morals. And Paul gets to defend the faith before them. Now, the road was already paved for Paul centuries before, when there was a plague that hit the city of Athens, and the poet Epimedes told the people to let sheep loose in the city and sacrifice them to the god whose altar they were closest to when they laid down. And it led to many cases of sheep being sacrificed to the unknown god. And Paul really harps on that of saying, "This unknown god has revealed himself, he is now known." And his main points are, as he's debating, he's really going against the Epicureans and the Stoics. Because he points out that God is not made but the Maker, and pointing out like idols cannot be worshiped by anything made by human hands. You don't worship what you can make. Or, and also, keep in mind, what is made by heavenly hands. Pointing out, and making God distinct from creation opposes the Stoics. We have, he points out that God has guided history, he was behind the rise and fall of every nation, which kind of shows that God sustains creation, which opposes the Epicurean view of God. He points out that God made man, so that man longs for God, which again opposes the Epicurean position of a distant God. Before God, and for Christ, God forgave human mistakes in their search for God. But once Christ is known, there are no more excuses. Basically, once you've heard who Christ is, if you still reject, there's no excuse. There is excuse before you ever heard the name of Christ, and that's an interesting theological debate we can have, as we would try to dissect that. But also, he preaches that judgment is coming, and Christ is the judge, and that the proof of Christ's preeminence is in the resurrection. And really, he uses Greek philosophy against them. He uses the Socratic method, where he flatters his audience, he appeals to their knowledge, and gives a revelation, and then backs up the revelation. But he does warn them that, once they were ignorant, but once, now that they're not, there is no longer an excuse. There is that call to come to Christ. And overall, Athenians, for the most part, did what they're known to do at that time. They talked a lot, they didn't act on it. Sounds familiar. And we really get the same thing that we get everywhere else in the book of Acts. Some rejected and mocked, others believed, and then others put off the decision, saying, "We will hear this again." But just because the numbers aren't great, there is success. We have two named converts here in chapter 17. Dionysus, the Areopagus, he was a member of the court who heard the trial. So like that intellectual and a city aristocrat. But we also have Demaris, who's a woman. So we get another person named. And it does show that universal appeal, because we're seeing a great man of the city and also a woman who was at the low end of the social status because of her sex. And it is that reminder that even when the numbers are not great, the fact that converts and new people were coming in shows that there was success. So that ends our session for this week. Next week, we continue on, and we're looking at chapters 18 through 20. Now, at this point, I again encourage you, if you are not already, you can sign up for the Zoom call on Wednesday night at 7 o'clock with me. Or you could join one of our small groups. There's one in State College, there's one in PA Furnace. Or you can form your own group, or if you feel necessary, just do this one your own. Down in the description box of this video, there will be a link to the study guide just for this section. But on the church's website, statecollegegmc.org, there, under the small groups, there is a link for the overall study guide of every session that we've had so far. And as I get everything done, they get added to that. So it's just one link, you can find everything, but the link is also in the video description. And now, as you prepare to go further in with the discussion guide, if questions come up your group can't answer, shoot me an email, I will try to get back to you. If we get serious enough questions, then we'll also go ahead... We'll go and make a special video about it. But at this point, I cut you loose to go and do your work.